Okay.
Okay. Right. Good, good evening, everybody. I'd like to order the regular planning commission meeting of the city of California in November, the 23rd, 2021. Corinne, could we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Alphabetically, I have Commissioner Bookbinder.
Present.
Commissioner Kamkar.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Craig here. Commissioners Zisser.
Yeah.
And our acting Chair Ching.
Here.
And for the record, we have the absences for our Chair Ostrowski and Commissioner Rivlin this time.
Thank you, Corinne. Moving on to the minutes, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I have a few notes I made. On page seven, you have Commissioner Bookbinder said that these estimates seem high based on current numbers. I'm sorry. Page seven says Commissioner Bookbinder said that these estimates seem high based on current numbers. I think I said that these seem much higher than our current production numbers. Meaning, we'll have to do something different this time. Also, on page nine, I think Ray Palola should be Raj Palola. I think he's one of our perennial visitors. And that's what I have.
Okay, any other changes? Corrections?
With those changes, I move approval for the November nine minutes?
Do I have a second? Thank you. And a vote for, a voice vote, please, sir.
Commissioners Bookbinder.
Aye.
Kamkar.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Zisser.
Aye.
And Acting Chair Ching.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Director Eastwood, do you have any communications to the planning commission? Any modifications, agenda changes?
Thank you, Chair Ching. Combining communications, agenda modifications, nothing from style. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the part of the agenda where we move to oral requests. This is the point of the agenda where members of the public may address the commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the commission. Which point I'll open the hearing. Not too many in the audience tonight. Any, do we see any hands online?
We do have two guests online, but I'll ask them to raise their hand if they would like to speak.
Okay, I don't hear or see anything with that. I'll close it. Thanks, Sussman. Okay. So moving to the first item and the only item on this commission meeting, Public Hearing PLN 2021-144. Before I read out the hearing, are there any disclosures from fellow commissioners? Okay, so this is a public hearing to consider the application PLN 2021-144, Ace Hardware For Conditional Use Permit To Allow Establishment Of A Hardware Store In A Vacant Tenant Space For The Office Max Within The Hamilton Plaza Shopping Center On Property Located At 1760 South Bascom Avenue In The C2 General Commercial Zoning District. Staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. A Planning Commission Action Final Unless Appealed In Writing To City Clerk Within Ten Calendar Days. Senior Planner Daniel Farmer, please take it away.
Thank you. Let me share my screen. Great. Before you leave this evening is an application for a conditional use permit for 1760 South Bascom Avenue For Ace Hardware Store. The property site is the Hamilton Plaza Shopping Center, which is approximately 12 acres. The subject tenant space is just under, just over 12,000 square feet. This shopping center is located at the southeast corner of Hamilton and Bascom Avenues, although the tenant space is located towards the southerly end of the shopping center. Center is located within the C2 General Commercial Zoning District. This tenant space was last occupied by the former Office Max, which had been divided into three smaller spaces, this one being the largest. The application for conditional use permit is necessary for any hardware store that is over 10,000 square feet. Here you have excerpts of the project plans that show the interior configuration of the standard Ace Hardware Store. Plans also indicate provision of two parking stalls that would be reserved for customer loading. Additionally, there would be some limited outdoor display area as shown in the hatched area in the bottom right graphic. In terms of some basic operational parameters, the business hours of the hardware store would be 7 to 8 p.m. Monday through Friday and at 8 a.m. to 6 p.m. Saturday with Sunday with an additional hour on either end for operational staff hours for prep and cleanup activity. And then consistent with the city's 1990 site approval for the shopping center, access to the alley would be limited to 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. daily. With regard to parking, due to the differential in parking standards between retail activity and hardware stores, the proposal would actually result in a surplus of 19 parking stalls. Overall, the shopping center is provided with 691 shared parking stalls. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit in finding that the project is categorically exempt under SEQA. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Are there any questions for Daniel from the commission? Please, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, Daniel, I'm thinking about it. I'm a little surprised the CUP is required, but you say any hardware store over 10,000 square feet. Are there other retailers over 10,000 square feet? Is that the trigger for the CUP? Or is it the type of use that a hardware store is a little more disruptive than other uses?
It's not uncommon. If I recall, it also applies to grocery stores. Think the idea there is that a store of a certain size can result in disproportionate amount of noise activity that could be disruptive to adjacent neighbors.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Please.
Yeah. I just have a couple of things. One is, this is type of, type of, on 36, there's a mention of a dental clinic in the noise section. And I think that might be one of these copy and paste things.
Yeah, thank you. We'll correct that on the back end.
Okay, so I just wanted to note that. And then the other question comment I had was regarding the loading spaces up front. And so my question is, is kind of, is this really considered the best location for loading spaces considering it's right at the intersection of the entrance from Bascom, it's like at the most traffic area, which is right there where the, the entrance comes in. And so you have the loading spaces as the first two front parking spaces. And I don't know how common loading is required, but I'm assuming maybe people were back in their trucks. And you've got it right there where everything intersects. So I was just wondering if anybody considered like moving loading spaces off farther or around the side where there's less, going to be less traffic.
I mean, if that's a concern that the commission shares, that's certainly a revision that could be incorporated as part of a motion to approve.
Okay. I just, I, yeah, again, it's like I've been there. I've been, I go through there all the time, coming in and out to get the CVS and whatnot. And, and if there is a busy section, it's right there in front of the store. And I don't know how busy these hardware gets during the day, but I'm assuming it's going to be more busy than Office Max. So, so it would be nice to take a hard look at that.
Okay, good point for discussion. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chair. So the aisle way on the side of the store, or I guess it is the side of the store. What is that used for? Is that for material delivery or is that also customer parking? The side of the store that's open, you know, there's some kind of a aisle way between the, I guess, the edge of the store and the fence. What is that area for?
I believe that's simply the existing breezeway. That's the way the building was constructed, if that's what you're referring to.
It looks, it looks pretty, it looks much bigger than a breezeway to me, maybe, I don't know, 30, 40 feet wide. And there's no, okay, perfect, if you have it.
We're referring to this space here?
So can you go to right? Where, where is the, I'm trying to orient myself. Can you tell me where Bascom is?
All right, so here is the subject tenant space.
Right. To the side, to the right of the, of the dark space, exactly. Is that the, oh, so it's parking?
Correct. This is the drive aisle parking.
Okay. Because that seems to be a good place for the material delivery. Our commission was talking about rather than getting the space up front. I agree. You know, the front would, may not be the best place. Well, that's okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple, couple of quick questions. Oh, let me bicycle racks. I didn't see that on the plan.
Don't believe so.
Okay, and my second question, I saw the letter from one of the neighbors concerned about the noise from loading and deliveries. The times for low operation and deliveries, that hasn't changed from Office Depot or Office Max?
Correct. So back in 1990, when the city last approved a major expansion of the shopping center, the, I believe that she was the city council upon appeal approved a center-wide limitation on access to that rear alley for delivery purposes. So that continuously applies.
Great. If there's no more questions, I'll open up for the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? I can see some people on Zoom. Nope. Anybody else from the public would like to comment? If you'd like to raise your hands on Zoom. Nope. Okay, so seeing nobody or hearing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and hand it over to the commission. So who would like to start us off? Please, Commissioner Bookbinder.
I think it's a good thing to have a, another, I guess, anchor store. That's been, that area's been empty for quite some time, as I recall. This looks like a good use for the the area. And I agree with what Commissioner Zisser said about putting the loading loading spaces there seems like a potential problem and moving them around to the south side rather than the west side of the building, I think, would, would really address that. But apart from that, I'm, I think this is a good application.
Do you know if they are required to have any electric car chargers? EV chargers?
Yeah, TI, a tenant improvement of this type wouldn't trigger EV chargers, no.
Okay. I guess we're not there yet as far as the TI work is concerned?
That likely would require an amendment to the city's building code to require that type of improvement across the board.
Sorry, what's TI?
Tenant improvement. Just a physical alteration of the space as configured for a particular tenant.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Please, Commissioner Craig.
Yeah, I, I think it's a fine use. I, this just happens to be a side of town and I'm very seldom there. But when I am there, it is really crowded. So I think Commissioner Zisser's point about moving the two customer loading spots over to the side would be a good idea because that's really a crowded parking lot. But it's this nice use and I don't see any problems with it other than that.
A question to, to staff of Daniel, do you need some more guidance from the commission on the relocation of the loading slots? Do you want to pull up the, the plans or are you happy with the general request of moving, moving the delivery or pickup base, I guess, yeah?
I mean, you could defer the final location to the director and we can work with the applicant to find a more suitable location.
That sounds good.
I would be supportive of that.
Just one more, one more thing. You may have mentioned it in your presentation, but is there a curb? Is there a curb adjustment at the entrance that's going to be incorporated at the Bascom, at that entrance at Bascom? Is that in the plans? Or did I miss?
Let's see. So at the entrance from Bascom, our public works department is requiring that the existing curb ramp be updated to meet current accessibility requirements, if that's what you're referring to. Yes.
One other thing I wanted to bring up. I don't expect the applicant to do badly on this for whatever reason, but has, can staff reply to the person who, who dropped a comment to let them know that if there's a problem with people doing deliveries outside the assigned hours, the appropriate people to notify about that? We have a complaint process for that, correct?
We do. And we did confirm receipt of the email and inform them of the standard requirement that applies to the shopping center.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, yeah, I, I think a great development. Good to see a quality retailer like Ace to establish in Campbell. I would like to add the condition of putting a bicycle rack in there. Location and size subject to the director's decision. But I would like to add that. The other commissioners are in agreement?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
If we're going to defer this to the director's approval, would we have to use a different motion than the one specified in the packet?
Well, you could augment the motion. So read the beginning of the motion and then simply indicate revise to provide for a bicycle rack and relocated loading stalls as per the direction of the community development director. Something along those lines.
Okay, in that case, I, I move that the planning commission take action to adopt resolution in attachment one approving conditional use permit, finding the project categorically exempt under section 15301, class one of SEQA pertaining to the minor alteration of existing facilities with the addition that they add a bike rack and work with the director to up to the director's approval for moving the loading dock spaces.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you. Could we have a voice vote, please, Corinne?
Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Kamkar?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Zisser?
Aye.
Acting Chair Ching?
Aye.
Aye, zero.
Thank you. And that is final unless there's a written appeal within 10 days. Okay, so I think that's the only agenda item. One, that's only agenda item. So I'll bring the meeting to the close. Director?
Yes.
Directors. Director Eastwood, do you have anything to report to the commission?
I, I won't keep you too much, although you did spend a speed record there. So first off, welcome back. Probably flexing some muscles that haven't been used in two years. So congratulations on getting used to this environment. Again, it's putting together what you were used to over two years ago with what you've been used to for the last two years. But I know it's a little bit awkward to put those together, but congrats. It looks like the right meeting and project to test this out. Just a few quick notes on some upcoming things. Give me one second. So as you know, we're continuing on the housing element work. Wanted to report last week, the council had a special meeting on the 17th. They reviewed what you reviewed the week before on the housing element sites. Generally, my recollection is a lot of concurrents with planning commission direction. So at this point, we're sharpening our pencils. We're trying to hone down more of those housing opportunity sites. We're going to come back to you on a special meeting on November 9th. I'm pretty sure Corinne has reached out to you.
Just?
December 9th. Thank you. Not going backwards in time. December 9th. We had targeted 5:30. I know that's a bit early, so I'm not sure if we're, we have a quorum for that. If we need to adjust that time back a little bit, we can. But Corinne can work with you to make sure the best time it works. So we just want a special meeting for that date. That is actually a Thursday. Yeah, so the, this time we won't crowd the agenda with other items. We'll be just on the housing element. You'll have time to focus. But we want to make sure you're available by the time. So if it needs to go back to 6:30, we can do that. Just a few notes between now and then. We had a very robust discussion with affordable housing developers yesterday, a lot of good feedback, and we'll unfold that into some of the recommendations. We have a meeting with residential housing developers next week. We heard from the business community today, so we're doing a lot more outreach. One thing we're nervous about, it's a lot still to swallow in two meetings and give a lot of direction on the future of Campbell and 3,000 units over two months. The driver is to try and get the SEQA started in January. We did talk to our secret consultants today, and we think there's a little more bandwidth to use one extra meeting in January. So to let, take a little bit of the pressure off, to not have some final, final decisions in, in December. So I think that's good news. We'll start to keep narrowing down the sites in December, and then I think we'll use January to get to a final decision. That's the housing element. Two last updates. As you know, as I noted before, you saw one half of our planning department. Daniel, the other half is Stephen Rose. We're down in staff. Good news is, we are in the midst of two recruitments, one for an assistant, one for an associate. Interviews for one have started. The other interviews will start in a week or two. Hopefully we'll have, you'll see those two new bodies in January. So that's great news. And then last but not least, I reported you before, we are preparing an SB9 interim urgency ordinance. Doesn't go to the commission. It will go to council on December 7th. Got the month right. We'll give you a copy of the report. Should be available next week, so at least you know it's in there. As an interim ordinance, it's only effective for 45 days. So we do anticipate coming back to the commission and the council to revisit the ordinance likely in January. And you'll see that to extend it or make modifications. And that's my report.
Thank you.
Please. Thank you. So I thought SB9 doesn't take effect from, till January. So it's 45 days from when it takes effect or 45 days from December 7th, that you?
It'd be, if the council takes an action on December 7th, it'd be 45 days from that date. Right? And it would carry, and there's options to extend it. Our attorney might know further, extend it further, 30 days or even beyond that. But it only, the interim ordinance only lasts for 45 days.
Thank you.
Please, Commissioners.
Yeah, just on, making sure I understand what's December 9th is about. We'll, we'll be beginning a first take on the inventory list. Obviously in advance of the 9th to take a look at for the 9th. And do you have a sense of how long the list is at this point? And you know, I would, you know, I guess, I guess the question I have is for, as a planning commissioner is looking at an inventory list, do you have advice for us in terms of what we should be looking for? Do we want to? I mean, I know Adam's going to look at every one of them, but you know that for sure, right? But it is like, look at the list in detail and, and if we each have our own ideas or thoughts about it, be ready to do that.
I think so, yeah. To answer both those questions, the list is long. If, if we, I think we showed the initial site, didn't want you to go into it. I, I know there's a lot of sites listed. We tried to stay on themes. Remember, we presented options three, four, and five TOD, commercial corridors. The council generally agreed with that. And so I think we're going to start there in these areas. The housing opportunity sites that make the most sense, and that's both developer interest, they're vacant. A lot of factors that is probably, I'd call low hanging fruit. I think staff will bring those first. And some recommendations on densities. And then you'll see and some recommendations on densities. And then you'll see a narrowing from there. So, um, but to answer your question, we'd appreciate any, any feedback, uh, knowledge input you have on any of the sites. Uh, one thing I'd add, if, if you think there are sites out there that we haven't considered, hey, we're, we're all ears. Um, and we told the council the same thing. If you have sites you'd be interested, we get letters from um property owners who, who want us to consider sites. So number one, please give that feedback. Number two, it's a pretty small city. Uh, I, I hope you have the opportunity at least to, you've probably seen and know some of these sites. But take the opportunity to go see them. Um, I can't, yeah, we're still kind of seeing how far we can go in December. I'd say we're not to the point of a final decision on sites, but that's sort of a grouping of these areas and sites and identifying what's what, what, what sites likely will be the easiest to develop, starting with those, if that helps put your mind in the right framework.
So the other thing is, is that on this inventory list, at this time, will, is they be marked in terms of whether they're gonna, what, what density level? What's the potential range of the number of units that could go in there? And um, whether they're more likely to be affordable, not a, or market rate, things like that?
Exactly, all three.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll discuss a discussion on some tools to make it more. How do you create an environment where actually affordable the housing development will happen? It's really hard. It's easy to zone for residential and zone for densities, but to get to the next step of create an environment where it's more certain that actually affordable housing development above and beyond inclusion and housing ordinance requirements will happen on a site is what we'll look at more closely.
Thank you.
Um, about when will we get to see the, like, draft inventory?
Uh, with the staff report, which will, so your meeting is on December ninth. It's a Thursday. I think the best we can do will be the Friday before, which is next Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one last thing. So you'll remember prior to our focus on housing, we had brought to you the envisioned uh general plan update. This was the G-PAC recommended. This was back in September, maybe seems like a long time ago. There were a few loose ends out of that. Uh, some had to do with uh floor area ratio, increasing the standards. Um, some things came out of the council on, on changing the Hamilton Avenue specific plan a little bit. So we're taking a few of those loose ends and we're going to bring those back to you and the council at the December meeting. So note, you'll have, most of the focus will be on housing elements, but there are two to three items that we'll have at the beginning of the meeting, just to try and close up, that were not related to housing that you had discussed back in September.
Okay, thank you. Um, I did have a few other questions. Is there a summary or recording of the meetings with developers that uh we can have or will it just be? Uh, will the results just be in the packet?
They'll be in the packet.
Okay, any other question? Um, I noticed that the housing element survey is still not available in Spanish. Uh, is it? Are we going to have that available before the?
It actually is, yeah. And what I can do is work with Corinne to send you a link. Right before the city council meeting last week, we had one of our consultants transcribe the whole thing in Spanish and then we pushed out an email blast to our stakeholders with the link to take the uh survey in Spanish.
Oh, okay. The, if you change, just change the language on the survey, it doesn't, that, that's not the thing to do. So, okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. Another question. Um, uh, before this SB nine, um, sort of take us out of the storm, um, you were talking about uh, uh, maybe getting rid of PD zones in the city, you know, if possible. And so has that, the first thing's gone off now because of SB nine or not necessarily?
No, no, we still, we still intend to. Uh, and uh, I, I believe the commission had concurred with it, the council had concurred with that. Uh, it's not easy. I'll, I'll tell you that. A lot of our, we have a lot of PD zoning. Uh, but because, for variety reasons, it, it, it creates a lot of ambiguity in the process and it's hard to navigate, doesn't click clear standards. Uh, the clear direction to staff was to in many of these areas, change these to conforming zoning districts. A, a big lift will be the gap we have is to create a zoning district for mixed use. I think that initially Campbell does not have that as a general plan designation, but not a mixed-use zoning district, which is why PD is used a lot. So so to answer your question, Commissioner Camp Car, uh, no intent to stop the work we're doing on, I wouldn't say eradicating the PD zoning, but, but minimizing its use and, and moving Campbell direction of using more conforming zonings. And that work will continue throughout two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, of course, you're being interrogated tonight. So I've got, uh, maybe one or two questions. Am I right in thinking Campbell is underserved in terms of a, a number of parks for the population?
Hmm. I don't know the answer. I mean, there's a standard ratio, which I can't, it's on top of my head on, on the number of persons per parks. Uh, I don't have an answer to that question. We can look into it and report back. There's both the, the ratio of population per parks. And then there's, of course, geographic proximity is somewhere within a certain walking distance.
Okay, um, and, and I guess a, a follow-on question to that is, what's the process for identifying um potential areas for development as um parks or, or open areas? And especially as if you're going to be putting another three thousand plus homes.
Right.
The demand for open space will be, well, will increase. Uh, how, how's that, how's that brought to the attention of the council and, or, or? Yeah, wherever it should be, pulled in front of.
Yeah, I'd have to. The only thing I report to you, we do, is we do have park impact fees, which I think the commission might be aware of, Quimby fees. When a development comes in, we take in money and that's used to both acquire land for parks and, and do park improvements. The master planning process of where we identify, you know, areas in Campbell, areas that are underserved, perhaps target opportunity sites for acquisition, I'd have to get more information on. I, I, I don't have that answer for you tonight. But I can work with our public works and recreation folks uh to find an answer.
Look, that would be, I know you guys are fully load overloaded, right? At some point, that would, that would be good. And just, just in consideration that, you know, the housing element is coming up and that's going to be one of the things that will be uh discussed, I'm sure. Thank you.
Um, sorry, I, I just remembered one, one other thing. I just wanted to make sure, I believe it was Edith Morley Park was not uh showing up correctly on the park proximity map and that's been fixed before you do all the work with the site inventory?
Let me, let me verify. Yeah, I do remember hearing that. So, okay, just wanted to make sure, I, I'm sure you have that in notes somewhere. I just wanted to make a note of it. Thank you. I realize it's a ton of questions. Thank you.
Okay. I don't want to get into, I don't want to get into like individual stuff, but you know, uh, you know, everybody's talking, talks about the fries. You know, fries is always coming up, right? So, so, and I drive by fries almost every day. So, so I, I just have a question about whether anybody has talked, and I, I know that the fries land, uh, owner is obviously interested in redeveloping it, possibly for residential. And, and so I, I guess my question is, has anybody ever talked about um, using the existing building to reconfigure for residential? I know it's out there, but I, I actually looked it up and it's not an uncommon thing to do is to take what would be in the past a warehouse-style building and turn it into a residential um, uh, development. Uh, you don't have to knock the building down. In theory, the costs are and the time is much less, assuming there are things that I don't know about. I was just wondering, has anybody ever talked about that? Did you know of?
No, but intriguing. Well, to answer your question, no. I, I've heard a little bit about um those, yeah, I mean, adaptive reuse is what you're mentioning and sort of a tenant improvement, almost to go back to the.
They've done it with targets, they've done it with, a lot of, some of the big boxes have gone away. And in, in some places in some cities, they reconfigured it, put in apartments, put in lofts. Um, and turned it into a residential property without having to knock down that building. And that's a really big building.
It is, yeah. There, we'd have to do, you know, of course feasibility, they'd have to do feasibility analysis.
Just wanted to get it off my chest.
I wish we know.
Thank you.
Full of thought.
Uh, I think we'll be able to close the meeting.